How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxi. I'm calling to order the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Tongonoxi City Council. Ms. Huntington, would you note that I am present and call the roll, please?
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
And Mr. Dale is absent.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are we on? Our mics off? Okay. Item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Council, do you have any questions or concerns or conversations about the those minutes?
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item three, consent agenda. The this is where we review the bill payments from the previous cycle. Council, do you have any questions or concerns or conversations about the minutes from last meeting? If not, I'd accept motion approve.
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to old business. This is where we discuss items from previous agendas, previous meetings, and allow the public to speak on any topics they care to. There are public hearings tonight for the budget revenue red that neutral rate and consideration of the budget, so we'll talk about those then. Dan, did any Mr. Porter, did anybody sign up to speak?
I don't have any other signups, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item A under new business, public hearing, two thousand twenty-four budget revenue neutral rate. Mr. Brekovich.
Thanks, Mayor. So actually, the first four items this evening on the agenda are all budget-related. The first two will be public hearings, both for the revenue neutral rate and the proposed budget as published, and and then moving into action on the budgets if we're ready to do that. So we've got a presentation that's pretty thorough, but I guess just to kind of framework it, maybe we have some people watching or some people here that aren't familiar with the process as a whole. And so the presentation we have, we'll go over some general items, calendar, things that were required for publication, essentially, how did we get to where we are tonight? The presentation will cover items that are requested in next year's budget and include things like our CMIP or capital maintenance and improvement plan that deals with our large infrastructure projects. We're going to take a look at the things that were prioritized for funding next year, and then the things that we're developing on a calendar up to five or more years out that we've identified as needs or priorities, they're just not next year's priorities. We'll also take into consideration the community funding requests that we got and that we heard from those groups and how that's budgeted for. You heard from all the department heads on operational and equipment needs, and we're we're going to regurgitate all of that to say that's built into the budget. And then we're going to spend a lot of a little bit more time talking again about the revenue neutral rate, what our efforts were to get as close as we could to that, and what we're proposing as tax relief back to the city taxpayers for this year, and then ultimately take that step back to say again, well, and how does the city factor into the total tax bill, and what does that look like as a whole? So that's the general framework, and if Mayor, if you'll allow it, I think it might be good to let staff do that presentation first, so that if you if you're not intimately familiar and you haven't been following along for the months of discussion that have led up to this evening, that presentation will catch you up in about twenty twenty-five minutes.
Sounds good. All right, thanks. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Porter.
Thank you, George. So the what are we here for tonight? Slide slide number two in the presentation. George really thoroughly just covered that, so I won't belabor it. Quick synopsis again of our process to date. We started back in the spring with the spring retreat discussions, accelerated through the CMIP work session in May, director budget presentations and community group presentations in June and July. In late July, the city council made a decision about a maximum mill levy not to exceed amount that was included in the revenue neutral rate publications that were mailed out to each individual taxpayer by the county. And then finally, we've worked through a couple additional work sessions in the month of August to talk about fund balance levels and mill levy scenarios that you'll see reflected with some changes that we'll highlight in more detail in just a moment. Our backstop for completion of the budget, we have a motion or an agenda item to consider approval later tonight, but we also have our second September regular meeting, should the city council discuss and decide to have any additional changes made at this point in the process. So a quick recap on slide four of what what went into the budget and what were the areas of focus or emphasis as we developed the two thousand twenty-four proposed budget? So first off is infrastructure investments. Some of the goals were addressing the challenges of a growing community, the the good challenges to experience, but additional infrastructure for our water and wastewater utilities, as well as, in some cases, our road network is included in the in the prioritization of capital projects in particular. We targeted high utilization of city sales tax for infrastructure and our share of the county sales tax. A lot of those proceeds are utilized directly towards infrastructure and capital projects, and each project that those cash finance either minimizes or eliminates the need to possibly debt finance those improvements and add to the mill levy and the debt service fund to make those annual payment requirements for debt service. Community building and support is an area we've included in the budget for many years, at least the last five or six years. This year, we have four community organizations being supported as requested at the full amount requested, and also two regularly recurring community events that we'll highlight on a later slide. We also continue to participate in regional economic development and planning efforts. This year, if you'll remember, we even went above and beyond and were a funding partner in the Leavenworth County Transportation Plan process, but that was a one-year investment, and then this year, that you will not see included in the proposed budget because that was a one-time project cost. Operational resources and staffing to help provide quality services. The the budget as presented continues to support employee merit opportunities, adds additional stipend pay for specific staff trained in in the range master and drug recognition expert areas in the police department, and also provides vehicle and equipment replacement for our police department and for our public works department that we'll highlight in more detail later. For staffing and position changes, there's only one full-time benefited position added, and that is an additional utility operator, bringing our number of operators as a as a kind of frontline utility worker to two with the added position next year, and four total certified operators for our water and sewer plant, counting our management group and the public works department. So that redundancy and additional staffing support is is really critical as we look at continuing to provide those quality services as the city grows and as our utilities grow. And finally, property tax rate adjustments. I won't go into too much detail here because there are several slides later in the presentation, but we do reflect an adjustment in the maximum mill levy published in the R and R publication, and we'll go into detail of where that is and which funds and what the monetary difference would be. Slide five dives in on the infrastructure projects that are funded in two thousand twenty-four and in part or in total. The Fourth Street Bridge replacement, a little over one point six million dollars is our updated project cost. We do expect that by later this fall, we could commence some of the surveying and and design engineering contracts for that project, and with that schedule, we could anticipate being done by early spring in two thousand twenty-five. So bridge work is at a high priority across the state, and we will need to be aggressive with our timeline to make significant progress next year. The wastewater treatment plant improvements, phase one, the debt service obligation expectation for that project is built into the two thousand twenty-four budget. We hope later this fall to have requests to go out to bid for that project with the design elements being prepared by BG Consultants, and then construction would commence later in two thousand twenty-four. We're also planning and and strategizing for ways to repay our current two-year temp notes coming due in March of two thousand twenty-five for the water tower project, to either put into place cash repayment of those temporary notes with utility revenues and other applicable revenue sources, or look at permanent financing options if we need to do that at that point in time. And finally, we've talked a lot about road maintenance responsibilities that the county has notified the city that will no longer be being performed by the county, and so we're building in expectations for us to have enhanced road maintenance requirements for those roads like Tongonoxi Drive and Washington Street that previously the surface was maintained by the county, and now the city has full responsibility for the areas that are entirely within the city limits along those two stretches. We also have a few very small stretches that likely will either be split in cost with the county or revert back to the county, but they're far outweighed by the benefit we've received over that interlocal agreement term that's now been terminated by the county. Any questions on those projects before we keep going? Okay. So looking at the community support, the four organizations that each requested and are built into the budget to receive five thousand dollars next year include the Tongonoxi Business Association, the Tongonoxi Arts Council, the Tongonoxi Community Historical Society, the Tongonoxi Farmers Market, and ten thousand dollars is budgeted for the combined budget for the Tongi Days Festival, which is actually coming up later this month for two thousand twenty-three, and for the mayor's tree lighting, which is scheduled to occur in mid-November and has traditionally been on that date, and that group is actually actively planning as well for that event later this year. So that reflects thirty thousand dollars in total expenditures. On the next slide, economic development and intergovernmental participation. We remain a funding partner in the proposed budget and the full amount requested by Leavenworth County Development Corporation. The city's fee is determined by a comparison of the county's different communities, respective population, and ad valorem tax base, combined with a ten thousand dollar fee that the city of Leavenworth and city of Tongonoxi are charged for marketing efforts for their business park properties that are present in those two communities, but not in the other parts of the county. Mid-America Regional Council is another planning entity in the metropolitan area that the city is a member of. We have training resources available through that participation, as well as different grant opportunities that the city can participate in applica applications for collaboratively with the county or on our own. The League of Kansas Municipalities is a statewide organization that supports cities and counties, but mostly cities, and their efforts to work with the Kansas Legislature, train city staff on important legal procedures and and requirements, and also just general awareness of what's going on in the municipal field and the state. These expenditures total just under twenty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget. The next slide talks about public safety, operational support. This is a combination of staffing or or salaries and benefits, as well as vehicles and facility minor improvements. So two Chevy Tahoe vehicles are budgeted in the two thousand twenty-four proposed budget. There is one adjustment here. Previously, our expectations were that that total price would be about a hundred thousand dollars, and based on very recent discussions with vehicle dealerships that offer contract pricing, we do need to build in an additional fifteen thousand for possible cost increases next year that aren't certain right now, but are definitely anticipated by those vendors as they look ahead at next year's possible fleet pricing. Police facility maintenance and repainting, the siding, you've seen pictures, or if you've gone by, you've noticed the fading of the paint on that facility, which was last updated, I believe, in two thousand sixteen. We've got an item in the budget to address those issues. The police department is asking for a differential pay rate of a dollar an hour increase for staff that work the night shift as a as a pay differential to help make up for the less appealing twenty-four-seven component of a twenty-four-seven shift that some of their officers are required to work to ensure that coverage twenty-four-seven. The stipend pay, we currently pay stipend pay for the SRO position and the field training officer position, and an additional thousand dollars each is proposed for the stipend for the range master in charge of our range and staff qualification and training, and our drug recognition expert, which is a specific training that the police department staff can go to to service during needed processes, during stops with suspicion of impaired driving or other influence of illegal substances. The fire department is requesting adding a third staff position twenty-four-seven to the schedule. Currently, we have two full-time staff positions on duty twenty-four-seven. This would be a third slot filled by a combination of part-time employees in in lieu of hiring three new firefighters to fill the same hours of hours of required staffing. This is a effort to help save initial costs because the combination of costs of salaries and benefits for three full-time firefighters would much exceed a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. It's also a good trial to see if this model can work for the city, which already has a blended department of full-time, paid, part-time, and volunteer staff. So this is an enhancement to that level of service for our community and to the support for our staff in the fire department. Finally, the fire department also has forty-five hundred dollars increased cost requested across the maintenance, office and medical supplies, and personal protective equipment line items, which have seen increases in costs or demand as as the years have gone on, and so that's included as well. Any questions about any of these items?
No, but I will say for those watching this, I'm welcome to our guest. The fire department rarely asks for anything from the city budget. They usually fund everything with grants, so it's it's over. This is an overdue and much deserved request.
So slide nine highlights the public works and utilities, operational items and and minor equipment. A snow pusher attachment for the city's skid steer equipment was budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars. That would allow our public work staff to work in tighter spaces than our current dump trucks equipped with the snow plows or the large utility trucks equipped with snow plows are able to address, such as in cul-de-sacs, which we do have several in the city that that have that type of issue. The public works loader replacement is budgeted with trade-in. This equipment is over twenty years old and has actually recently experienced a few maintenance issues that have caused it to be offline and unavailable, and it is proposed for replacement through a combination of utility funds and the general fund in this two thousand twenty-four budget. For the water utility, a subsurface water leak detector, over the last couple of months, our public works department has been really busy repairing water leaks in multiple places. There were some repairs even completed last week in two or three different spots with water main breaks. This subsurface leak detector will help us better identify where a leak is present, which isn't always apparent from the surface of the ground when you're looking at it, and it helps us avoid having to call out to outside entities that can provide this service, sometimes at a cost, but often have a long response time, which sometimes doesn't meet our demands of getting things back online. One of our two mowers is included in the budget for next year to be replaced. Those two mowers service all city properties that require finish-level mowing. And then, again, that utility operator position, which would be the second frontline utility operator position, is also included in next year's budget, bringing us to a total of four certified operators in the public works department. Any questions about these items? So operational support, citywide initiatives and minor capital projects that weren't highlighted earlier. We do have an employee merit pool opportunity of up to five percent available in the budgeted projections for next year. We have changed the city's holiday observation expectation from ten and a half holidays observed to twelve with the expansion of Christmas Eve to a full holiday and adding Juneteenth to the holiday schedule, which was previously not on the schedule. The downtown Fourth Street corridor study, there's recently been a lot of progress with the survey, and the planning commission continues to work towards developing an RFP. We've budgeted up to thirty-five thousand in costs for next year to pay a consultant to do that public engagement and other planning steps that help us envision what's next for downtown as that infrastructure, which was last improved in, I believe, two thousand or twenty-ten, is is now needing a refresh or needing some adjustments over time. Finally, we also included a water park chair replacement program. Our lounge chairs are in high demand. We used to have a problem with many of them breaking due to age and and abuse, and now we've had patrons request more and more of them be put out on the pool deck, and we do have space both to put them out during during open session as well as store them in the off-season. So we're asking for additional budget authority to continue growing that lounge chair amenity for our patrons at the water park. The fire department has requested a storage building of a temporary nature to be constructed to store items that don't need to be in temperature-controlled environment that are currently in the station and taking up space. That not to exceed cost is estimated twenty thousand dollars. The police station maintenance repainting, this is repeated, but we've already covered it on an earlier slide, and then twenty thousand dollars is as a maximum amount put into next year's budget for consideration of options for enhancements at the firing range and doing an expansion of the analysis of that facility. Any questions on those items? Street maintenance or other nonutility projects included in the two thousand twenty-four budget. Street maintenance is able to be enhanced almost to a level of double the resources available through contribution from the infrastructure sales tax. That continues to be the proposal for two thousand twenty-four with five hundred thousand, a combination of state excise funds on gas or fuel sales, excise tax collections by the city on new development, and infrastructure sales tax collections, a portion of those. And so that total for a major capital, major contractual project would be half a million dollars next year, fifty thousand dollars for commodities associated with sidewalk repairs, pothole patching, and other street commodities purchases. We've already covered the Fourth Street Bridge replacement project, and then we also have a list of items proposed for the water park that are minor in nature, but they add up, we believe, to close to thirty-six thousand dollars. That list will be presented back to you probably in the next month or two, along with the report on this summer's performance of the water park, both financially and in attendance, and interest levels for the for the facility. Any questions on those items? So this next slide talks about utility projects. We've already covered the wastewater treatment plant improvements that's being proposed to be financed through the Kansas SRF loan program, but we also have included an item that's of a recurring nature, our sewer main television or or video inspection program, where we go to troublesome areas or areas with possible issues in the sewer main and videotape that and analyze whether additional repairs are needed in areas that are sometimes very deep and inaccessible for just viewing from the surface. We also have stormwater project focus areas from Church Street and Fourth Street to the general direction of the southeast, and on Ridge Street and Front Street between the grocery store, commercial center, and the new dog park site that are going to be analyzed for stormwater improvements and possibly sidewalk and other enhancements that may be needed along those corridors. And we've already covered the water tower financing planning for two thousand twenty-five as well. So what's not in the budget? This slide probably should just be called that. As we look ahead in two thousand twenty-five, going out through two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight, the the obvious item that we're planning for immediately in two thousand twenty-five is the city's share of the cost of the water tower that is not met by our EDA grant that's financing about forty-four or forty-five percent of that project. We also look ahead and see the need for wastewater treatment plant improvements, phase two, which is estimated at five point three million several years in the future. The twenty-two hundred and twenty-second street improvements, either collaborative participation or full cost, and the full cost estimate is listed for reference on this slide. And then Fourteenth Street construction of a road network extending from East Street and Washington to the new Fourteenth Street future intersection on twenty-four forty, south of the existing Twelfth Street intersection. So those projects total fifteen point three million, and that cost is one reason that none of them are advanced in two thousand twenty-four, but a good part of our capital maintenance planning process is that we're looking ahead and finding ways to strategize how to afford some or all of those projects over the next several years after two thousand twenty-four. Any questions about that or information? So switching gears into the notices that that led to the establishment of the public hearings for this evening, we did publish the required notice of public hearing in the Tongonoxi mayor on August twenty-third of this year and on the city's website. We also published the city's resolution adopted back in July, late July this year, certifying the revenue neutral rate and instructing staff to notify the county clerk. That notification also generated the property tax estimate, that notice of estimated ad valorem taxes that every property taxpayer in the county should have received from the county clerk, with each taxing district's maximum mill levy for consideration. That publication set the maximum mill levy and maximum expenditure authority for all budgeted funds. We can make the decision now or before budget adoption to reduce either of those items in any fund. They can't just they can't go up without a budget amendment next year. So this slide, slide fifteen illustrates our as-published notice of public hearing. That includes no change to the city's general fund mill levy, the city's debt service fund mill levy, and a net change of, I'm sorry, let me pull that up. Negative zero point eight seven two mils for the library operations and employee benefits funds. So the max mill levy for the city established by that publication, as a whole, for all four funds, is forty-three point eight two three mils, and that was the number illustrated as the proposed budget rate in the revenue neutral rate notice of public hearing. Slide sixteen shows adjustments being recommended for the proposed budget to the city's general fund and the city's debt service fund. We've included this red watermark copy in the agenda packet on the city's website for clarity, and it shows in highlighted areas, which you can't read on the printouts, but are are listed on this slide in large font. So the general fund is proposed at a decrease of two point zero six four mils, which is just under a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of revenue, and the city's debt service fund is proposed to decrease one point zero six four mils, just under seventy-seven thousand dollars. That, along with the library's zero point eight seven two mils, totals four mils reduction, which would reduce the city's overall mill levy from this year's value of forty-four point six nine five mils to forty point six nine five mils. So this is a decrease in addition to the decrease shown in the revenue neutral rate notice for the library, an additional decrease for those two highlighted funds on this slide. And just converting that to contextual information, the equivalent for a hypothetical residential property with an appraised value of three hundred thousand dollars would be property tax savings of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. property with an appraised value of $300,000 would be property tax savings of $138 a year, those four mills. That doesn't account for actions by any other taxing district, but just for the city's share of a property tax bill, that would be the adjustment from four mills, lower mill levy, with all things else being held equal. Slide 17 highlights the same information in slightly a different sense, and so one other way to consider the change in mill levy as a four-mill decrease is not capturing approximately $288,560 of available tax revenue with a flat mill levy, and it's also still capturing close to $160,000 between the city's debt service fund and the city's general fund of the total increased valuation. Our Slide 18 provides a little bit more detailed breakout of a way we've looked at this in earlier work sessions. What it highlights is, excuse me, as I turn the page, you can see highlighted in the pie graph on this chart, if the city's existing tax base is the light green pie, the growth in valuation, which was almost $10 million in assessed valuation from last year's value of just over 61 million assessed valuation, up to over 72 million in assessed valuation. The 11% represented with yellow color in this pie graph is the sum total of all revaluation of existing property. So that's property that was on the tax rolls previously and is just being revalued year over year by the county appraiser. That doesn't include major remodels, major remodels and new construction or newly added properties to the tax roll make up about 5.7% of the total tax base for the city. So in relative terms, about one-third, or a little more than one-third of the growth in the city's tax base is attributable to new construction and remodel, and the other two-thirds are attributable to revaluation as a whole across the tax base. What's important to point out with a four-mill levy reduction for the city levies is that the city would still collect more total revenue than in 2023. The relative share more is 6.2%, which is about half a percent from just capturing the growth from new construction, remodeling, and changes in personal property. So while it doesn't quite make it to not capturing all of the revaluation change, it does come within half a percent of that, which is a strategy that the city looked at early in the budget process, trying to capture just new growth versus revenue neutral versus a flat mill levy as scenarios. So what's presented tonight comes within a half percent of only capturing the new growth and remodel valuation changes in our tax base. Is there any questions about that information or how it's here? We've looked also and kind of read up on what our overlapping tax districts are planning or contemplating. The school district's budget adoption is not scheduled until, I believe, next week on September 11th. The projected mill levy being contemplated for the school district alone, not the rec commission, is a decrease of a little more than 2.5 mills, bringing them down to 59.848 mills. The city's debt service fund and general fund are showing a 3.128 net reduction from last year's mill levy. The city's library fund showing negative .872 reduction. That net, obviously, combined total is four mills, like we've discussed. The county eventually adopted last week what we believed to be a 1/16th of a mill reduction. That's negative 0.063 differential. Odds are adjustments in the tax base by October will eliminate or completely adjust whatever that change is. There's always rounding as the eventual resolution of appeals or mistakes or whatever other changes happen. So in all respects, it's close to a flat mill levy. The rec commission adopted a just-under 0.2-mill reduction from a total close to five mills to close to 4.8 mills for their two funds, and the state of Kansas remains at 1.5 mills, which has been the position over long term. So as you can see in this slide of our taxing jurisdictions that overlap with the city, the city's mill levy reduction is the largest and by somewhat of a significant amount. The ever-popular how-my-property-tax dollar is spent or allocated amongst the tax districts. The school district makes up the majority of the tax bill at 42 cents of every dollar for a City of Tongonoxi tax statement. The city's general fund and debt service fund are now 24 cents of every dollar. Last year, we were 25, and the county was 24, so the effects of the city's reduction and the county's static level have swapped our position in that regard in next year's budget. The library for the city is 4 cents of every dollar, the rec commission is 3 cents, and I believe the state of Kansas is 1 cent. So that sums up our property tax dollar bill. That's a helpful graphic that we'll include in our fall newsletter and in our 2024 budget book to help illustrate for people, in addition to the revenue neutral rate notice and other documents they can find online, where their property taxes go and what services they get for those costs. So in closing, we are required to complete two public hearings as posted for tonight. Staff are happy to take any questions now or later in the discussion, and then following the public hearings, we do need to consider the revenue neutral rate resolution included in your agenda packets tonight and complete a roll call vote for that. And then we have this meeting or the next meeting to complete our adoption of the 2024 budget, which also will require a roll call vote, and we can adopt it as presented with a four-mill reduction or with additional changes. Happy to take any questions you have and clarify anything that we missed.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Counsel, unless you object, I'll just go ahead and open up the public hearing. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing for the 2024 budget revenue neutral rate. Does anyone care to speak?
Mayor, we have Wally Broner.
Wally B., I wasn't aware of the Fourth Street Bridge, which we use every day. Is that going to be replaced soon or what? The Fourth Street Bridge.
Yeah, so it's funded in the 2024 budget.
It looks, they fixed it this summer, and it looks pretty darn good, so when's it gonna happen?
It would have construction going on the middle of next year through early 2025.
At least a year.
Close to nine months is projected.
Fourth Street to be completely closed during all that time, huh?
Part of that time, yeah.
Okay, where am I gonna, I'm gonna ride my bicycle through there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Broner. Is there anyone else who'd care to speak?
I would like to speak from as a taxpayer of Tongonoxi and seeing our county reducing the services providing to me, provided to me as a county resident and a taxpayer, and not reducing their tax levy any. I don't know how that qualifies or where's that money going. I'd be anxious as a taxpayer to know why they're putting that on City of Tongonoxi residents who also pay taxes, and they are taking the money away from the City of Tongonoxi, and where's it going? So that's my complaint as a taxpayer in the hearing. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there anyone else who cares to speak? Not seeing any further speakers, so I will close the public hearing, and then we'll open the public hearing for the consideration of the proposed 2024 budget as published. Anyone from the public care to speak on this?
My name's Sandy. First of all, Leavenworth is my hometown. Bethel, Kansas, which no longer exists, is my husband's. We spent 30 years in Washington State, and we came back from a winter in Phoenix, and we looked at our property tax bill. We had five, six acres, had horses and a barn, in a ranch style, about 1,700 square feet. So we said, that's it. We've had it with everything else going on in the state, and we're moving. So we looked at different places, and we said, well, let's move back around home. We have a few relatives left, so we chose Tongonoxi. Our taxes here have gone up every year. Now, our house is 1,000 more feet than it was, the one we owned, but we're not on six acres. We're on a little corner lot, and we checked what our old house went for. It sold for $650,000 recently. The taxes were $500 less a year than what we've paid for this last year, and from the looks of it, this is going up about $700 to $1,000 more. So I'm looking at maybe moving to Missouri. At least they give some kind of tax breaks to the elderly people. So just wanted to let you know, and I'm not the only one. Several other people have been to different meetings and have said the same thing. We moved back here because this was our home area, and it was better than where we were at before, and now we're looking at being taxed out of our home, so we're looking at moving. And with all the building going on around in the area, I cannot understand, they're paying taxes, so why is the tax going up? That's just my questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Counsel, do you have anything to add to that? Okay. Does anyone else care to speak on the consideration of the proposed 2024 budget as published? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing for the consideration of the proposed 2024 budget as published, and we'll move on to Resolution 092301, Resolution of the City of Tongonoxi, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Mr. Brekovich.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Staff, we really don't have any additional information to give you this evening. I think we tried to paint as clear of a picture of what we're prepping for in next year's budget, providing tax relief. At the end of the day, we are exceeding the revenue neutral rate, but by a small portion as was presented. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or to clarify anything. I know we went over a lot tonight, but we felt it was important to share all of those details.
My annual question is to the ending balance numbers as they exceed, and would you go through the ending balance numbers, what's available and where we're gonna be over policy, the policy that we have set, we haven't changed yet?
Yeah. I'm in charge of changing that.
Maybe procedurally, we'd want to do that on the next letter item?
We'll wait. Dan, Mr. Porter, are you able to grab it quick?
I don't think it's probably changed much.
All right, thanks.
But while he's doing that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 0923-01, a resolution of the City of Tongonoxi, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate pursuant to KSA 79-2988.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. We'll wait for the answer before we cast the vote.
Mr. Donnelly, were you asking primarily for general fund, fund balance information or across the utilities?
The general fund would be the main one that's driven by property tax and the purpose of, I do know what it is.
I think I have it pulled up from last.
The purpose is, the public needs to know what it is.
Right.
It's not my money, it's the public's money.
Right.
We seem to have a problem presenting that number every year. It should be a standard number in my book that comes out every year, so they know we have lots of expenses.
It's on the website from just two weeks ago from our meeting from the budget report. I mean, I can pull it up. I guess if I go back, just click.
So at the conclusion of 2024, as budgeted, the city would have estimated fund balance of 1,081, just under 1,082,000, which is 25%, almost dead even 25% of revenue in 2024. Our fund balance target is 15%, so that's 10% above that target, and that does include a reduction in fund balance of about $147,000, largely due to the mill levy reduction that's included in the proposed budget from the starting fund balance.
I think that's important that we were making progress on it.
Yeah. It is definitely going that direction.
We have plenty of expenses to cover.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Huntington, we call the roll for the vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Aye.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to Item D, Consider Adoption of the 2024 budget, proposed budget. Are there any, staff, do you have any more to add regarding that?
No, Mayor.
No. Counsel, do you have any questions or statements or motions?
From March till now, it's been a lot of work. It's been good work. I feel proud about what we've put together. I'm glad we could reduce the mill as much as we are.
Yeah, I think four mills, I mean, that's a large reduction in the mill levy, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2024 proposed budget as presented by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
I'll second, thank you.
You're the accountant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Ms. Huntington, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mr. Partridge?
Aye.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Donnelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dale?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks, staff, thanks so much for all the hard work you put into this.
Thanks, Mayor. If I could just take a second to offer recognition from my perspective to Mr. Porter for the work on both just developing a budget as well as strategies behind the entire conversation we've had, as well as the participation from each of our department heads who have attended nearly every budget work session and who legitimately try to run a lean organization, pursue every grant opportunity that's available, and that includes the ones we strike out on. We still try to go after that and ultimately glad to see the process go the way it did tonight, and hopefully you feel as policymakers you were provided every piece of information, and the fact that we can stream these meetings now, folks don't even have to attend the meeting to get access to that same information. Additional steps still need to happen, and for folks that are very interested in that, I'll just remind them that our website, which we revamped about a year ago, has easy access to the budget books, documents, meetings, records, and so if anyone wants to dive into that, they're free to do that, or feel free to contact staff, and we'll tell them exactly where to find that information as well. But I did want to offer that recognition to the amount of work staff puts in to get ready for a public hearing of this magnitude tonight, so. So thank you to them.
Good job, Dan.
Yeah. Dan and to the directors of all the departments, I agree. We have a great team of really astute professionals. We're very fortunate.
Okay. Moving on to Item E, consider approval of quote of, from Midwest Coatings Incorporated for roof repairs to city council chambers slash municipal court chambers facility located at 303 Berry Street. Mr. Brekovich?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I can probably take this item and give Mr. Porter a chance to rest his voice or take a drink of water, and he may have some additional details he might want to add. The building you described is this facility we're in here this evening. Following the round of storms we had earlier in the summer, we did, we had the chance to pair up our liability insurance provider coming in to assess or appraise our facilities to ensure our policies were adequately placed, and combine that with an opportunity to ask an adjuster to go look at the roof. And so this facility did sustain sufficient roof damage to qualify for roof replacement. You'll probably recall that all of these facilities have a specific type of roof membrane that's typically associated with one manufacturer, and that manufacturer typically has one, if not more than one, but typically one vendor in a region that does their product. And so what we asked for is for the adjuster to see what that claim amount might be, ask the vendor that provides the roof to provide us with what that cost would be. It would be covered under the insurance claim, but you know, as we work with that insurance provider over a five-year period, it'll show up on our loss claim report. But I feel that we've invested so much into this facility that that is one component that the roof was in okay shape when we moved in here, and the fact that it sustained damage, and I guess that's why we have insurance to go take care of this. So staff is, and Mr. Huskett's been involved in every step of this as well, from a facilities maintenance standpoint, and so staff is recommending moving forward with this. Mr. Porter, if I missed anything, please feel free to add details.
So from a budget perspective, with a claim of this magnitude, we do need to be a pass through for the insurance funds. So the city will be required to pay the full amount of just under $77,500 to Midwest Coating Incorporated. The city's deductible will be $2,500 for the repair, and the remaining balance would be provided to the city in reimbursement, one check upfront and one with completion. So we'll, we'll look at the different funds available. We looked initially at the capital projects fund and the general fund. Unfortunately, with this magnitude of costs, we may need to do a minor budget adjustment to be able to accomplish it in those funds, but we'll, might look at our unbudgeted funds to see if one could suffice as well. So we'll bring back that to you at a later date, should you approve the action requested tonight, to clear up what budgeted fund or unbudgeted fund the transactions will happen in.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I can't remember when this, this building was roofed.
Twenty-plus years ago was the report we heard.
I figured. Any questions, Counsel?
There's no risk of the repairs running over into another budget year?
I don't believe so. Basically, we can get it rolling this month, yeah.
Okay. That would be a worry just from a technical standpoint, but.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank God for a hailstorm.
Yeah. Anyone else? Not, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a bid with Midwest Coating Incorporated to replace the 303 Berry Street city facility roof for an amount not to exceed $77,495.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. City manager report?
No further items this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney agenda?
No items.
Thank you. Mayor pro temp agenda? Ms. Stevens?
They're just some good news items. We, I noticed that the outdoor music equipment that the Arts Council received with the grant has been installed by city staff that's in the pocket park. Between now and our next meeting, the rec commission is putting on the fireworks show out at the fairgrounds on Friday, September 15th, and then the Tongonoxie Business Association in collaboration with the city is gonna have Tongonoxie Days on Saturday, September 16th. So a lot of good news and excitement, and along with the farmers market that's going on every Thursday until sometime in October.
Five more weeks.
Five more weeks, so, yeah. We're really lucky to have such a thriving community and a lot of fun things going on.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. I have nothing other than an executive session, and Ms. McCutcheon, can you get us there?
I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss matters relating to security measures that protect the public building or facility located at 321 Delaware Street pursuant to the security measures exception in KSA 75-4319B12. The executive session will include the city attorney, city manager, and assistant city manager. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at eight.
07.
Yeah, 07.
I'll second.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You didn't put any seconds on that.